It's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. First item on our agenda is appointments. We have one resignation and then we'll have one opening at the Park Board. We will be receiving applications until February 15th. So if you're interested in serving on the Park Board, please submit an application. The next item is adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
None.
Okay. I'd like to remove Item C to Items for Commission Action from the Consent Agenda. So if there's no more modifications, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Aye. Second the motion. Make a motion to second.
And I'll second the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. It will be a little different with three members and Commissioner Hogg said he's sick tonight, so it'll be one of us making a motion in one second, I guess. So, next item on the agenda is adoption of the Consent Agenda. So I make a motion that we adopt the Consent Agenda excluding Item C. Do I have a second?
I have a...I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, presentation. Presentation of Life Saving Awards to Stacy Rexwinkle, Jason Hein, Josh Kavanus, Wyatt Keel, and Jonathan Boo.
Okay. Commissioner, first, I would like for Stacy Rexwinkle. And Jason Hein is unable to attend, so Crystal will be accepting for him if those two would come forward. And then the commission, if you would like to be up here. On November 17th, 2017, Independence Fire and EMS were dispatched to a residence for a report of a woman with chest pain. Advanced life support was given on scene and the patient was being transported to Joplin or Jane Phillips Hospital. While en route, the patient went unresponsive. Additional ALS with CPR was given and the patient was alert and talking upon arrival at the hospital. This life-saving commendation is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save or preserve a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention. This award is hereby presented to Stacy Rexwinkle and Jason Hein.
Stacy? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. If I could have Josh Kavanus, Jonathan Boo, and Wyatt Keel come forward.
On January 12th, 2018, Independence Fire and EMS were transporting a critical patient from Labatt ER in Independence to St. John's in Tulsa, Oklahoma. While en route, just south of South Coffeyville, the patient went unresponsive and lost pulses. CPR was initiated with ALS meds given and ambulance diverted back to CRMC in Coffeyville. Upon arrival at CRMC ER, pulses returned and patient was assessed by CRMC staff. Our crew then continued transfer to Tulsa without further incident. This life-saving commendation award by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save or preserve a human life that otherwise would have expired without immediate intervention. This award is hereby presented to Josh Kavanus, Jonathan Boo, and Wyatt Keel.
I just fall apart in a situation like that. It takes a special character to be able to stay calm and follow through. We really appreciate each of our paramedics, our police officers to the situations that they encounter. It's special. A lot of stress for them, so thank you. Next item is Items for Commission Action. Quickly return to Item C from the Consent Agenda. Consider authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with KDOT to participate in the voluntary federal fund exchange program. In my question in the packet, we had the supplemental agreement, but then also a letter addressing the request...yeah, the request to exchange federal funds. And my question, Mike, as we discussed, was the fund...the application was not completed, so could you explain?
Right. So, KDOT sent this agreement. And just to give you a little background on why we're doing it, we have an existing agreement for this federal fund exchange with KDOT. Currently, they notified us at the end of 2017, the program, the way it was going to be administered by the state of Kansas was going to change. And part of that change was is we could no longer bank funds from previous years. And we currently have no bank funds left. We exhausted everything in 2017 and got everything that was banked out.
And as banking, you mean?
Banking, so if they said, hey, you're eligible for $100,000 this year, but I only had $50,000 of eligible projects for the year, I could reserve it back and maybe then the next year I have an additional $50,000 that I can pull that from. Going forward, it's only going to be subject to that current year. And if you don't have enough projects, then you can't get all the money. So, and it won't carry forward anymore. So that is one change. So, the other change is the discount rate at which they're buying or exchanging these funds, these federal dollars. They're decreasing that from a 90% advance rate to a 75% advance rate starting in 2018. So the supplemental agreement is doing nothing more than addressing those issues and it just is an attachment to the original agreement that was signed. I think part of what the confusion was is I also included an advance letter that signed off on. That's just a copy. That's an illustration of what that advance looks like. We do not know what our available Fed funds will be for 2018 yet. So at that point in time, when they notify me, we'll fill that out and we'll bring that to you for sign-off.
Okay. Well, I noticed in the modification, it said about taking either all of our funds or a portion of our funds. But if we only take a portion, then we lose the remaining that we don't...
That's great. Now, so I might be able to advance them three or four times throughout the course of the year, given whatever projects that we have. But if we get to the end of the year and we don't have enough projects to advance again, yeah, they do not carry forward at this point going into 2019. So for 2018, I can already tell you that we have plenty, so we'll be good to go.
Yeah, because there's specific uses...
Yes.
For the funds. Correct. Okay. So all we are tonight is approving the amended agreement.
Yeah, the supplemental agreement.
Supplemental.
Yes. So, and it's just authorizing you to sign that and any additional documents, related documents.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I have a motion that we adopt the request to exchange federal fund agreement.
Okay. I'll second the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item, Item A. Consider a request from the Independence Historic Preservation and Resource Commission to use funds remaining from the Downtown Cultural Arts Advisory Board to produce downtown historic landmark signs. These funds, however, were designated for statue-related expenditures under the recommendation of the Downtown Cultural Arts Advisory Board.
So actually, I have a quorum of our committee, Tim Emmert and Tom Hoffert, Tim Haynes and myself. And this is the plaque. I don't know if you've seen the real one or just a picture of it. But about a year ago, or maybe even more, I was in Iola tennis match and walked downtown and they had these signs on their buildings. So I took some pictures, brought it back to our Preservation Commission, and we've toyed with shapes, sizes, different lettering, different colors, and we've come up with this that Tim Haynes made from the FabLab. They will be about 25, $20 to $25 apiece to make. And so we aren't asking that they be funded through that money from the Downtown Cultural Arts. And we will put them on all the contributing buildings if we have their permission in the registered downtown district. And there are 92 buildings that are contributing buildings in the downtown district. We will not make any distinction whether they are individually listed, like the Booth Hotel, the museum, and in fact, and we've taken it to the State Historical Society. They really liked our design and liked the fact that it said historic landmark and did not designate whether it was individually listed or whether it was simply a contributing building to the district. The only condition we have from the state is that in attaching to the buildings, we must drill in the mortar joints only. And as I've walked around downtown, there are some courses that can be even more difficult than that because like the building where John Heckman is, there are no mortar joints. It's whatever that stuff is. And there are some iron ones. So, but we will get permission from the state on how to adhere them if the property owners agree. And the name that we will put on there, in most cases, was the original business building and the date that it was constructed. Some of them may be because the study that Dale Nims did in the late 80s had C 1890, circa 1890. And we're going to leave off the C because in a lot of cases, buildings can take more than a year to build anyway. So whether you put like the Booth 1911, 1912, we figure that people aren't going to use it for documentation for their doctoral thesis anymore. So I don't know if you have questions from or any of us on the commission?
So is this going to be put in a booklet form so if somebody's visiting and they could have directions to all of them, or is this just a first phase?
That's later in life.
Okay.
And we talked about numbering them, but until there is such a booklet, the numbers might be more confusing than helpful.
Okay. Mayor?
I'd like to add that the plaques can be altered after they've been finished because it's primarily just a surface treatment to a plate. So the plaques could be removed, modified, and then replaced without requiring to make a new plaque altogether.
Mayor, if I...as pointed out in the Request for Council Action, again, of course, we're supportive of this project. Our only concern was this money is...was under the purview of another board, which I guess hasn't met for some time, so I'm not necessarily that active. But the purpose of the money was, of course, for the statues downtown. And so if we're taking that money, we just need to realize that there won't be any money there for that unless we, the city, or somebody replaces that in some fashion. But we just want to bring that, make sure that's clear, that we're taking that money for that use.
And that was kind of my next question, dealing with the funds. That was only generated for three years?
The $10,000 was all included.
Yeah. Yeah. But was it a commitment of ongoing or just for the three years?
The minutes said each year, but then it only happened so three years, so that it must have been something that was taken out during the budget process.
Okay. So no one's going to come and say, hey, you're behind on your contributions and now that would be quite a sum of...
No, I mean, that's something we can look at, again, starting that up again if that was a direction. I mean, if we work through the budget, if we can start, again, kind of a sinking fund, putting money there every year. So those statues are expensive and if we have to replace one or do a lot of maintenance, it'd be a good source of funds to do that. We'd have them...
There's a lot of leaky water lines and sewer lines and potholes that would benefit more from the $10,000 if there's not a need. I did notice in the comment that if it became an issue, the money could be replaced. You know, I kind of see it as along the same line as the statues, really, you know. It's...
Tim would like to address that.
Okay, Tim?
Being the old guy, that money was put in for the...not for the statues, but for the installation of the statues.
Okay.
It was put in for buying plaques to identify the statues. Every statue downtown has been purchased with private funds, every one of them.
Okay.
And I think I counted the other day, there's like 24 in the city, counting the ones in the park. That money hasn't been used for years. I don't know, the committee that this is to be referred to hasn't met in years and it's just kind of gone stagnant. So I think there's no problem with these guys using the money for the purpose...for the purpose that they requested for. It's an easy way and it's a good use of the money and we can figure out a way to replace it if you ever have a need. I hope you have a need for the money, but you haven't for I don't know how many years. A long time.
It says here that on this suggested motion, it says on Part II, it says the understanding that funds will be replenished by a private party if needed for future installation of plaques, lighting, maintenance, or grant matches for downtown statues.
Well, it's been very generous of the city in the past to provide these funds for the installation. Because at the time it started, we were just getting off the ground and what we have learned, and that money hasn't been used for a long time, because what we've learned is people that are in the position to donate those statues, and they're very expensive, are just willing to pay for the little bit of concrete or whatever it takes to install them. But in the beginning, it was a real essential part of getting the whole statue thing off the ground.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments from the committee? Okay.
Not that I know of.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Then at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
We make a motion that we approve contingent on Downtown Cultural Arts Advisory Board approval and an alternate source of funds for maintenance. Make a motion to approve that.
Did you get it, Mike?
Did that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to read it back, just...
State that again, Lewis.
Okay.
Because the end of it there, kind of cut off on that.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve contingent on Downtown Cultural Arts Advisory Board's approval and an alternate source of funds for maintenance for the use of the money for these...
Plaques.
Plaques, signs.
I think the recommendation was instead of requiring the cultural arts board to approve, is that what I mean, they'd have to have a meeting? Just to notify them if they did object within 30 days, just to assume it was okay. Is that what's there?
Yes. So we do not proceed to make an objection within 30 days and we don't file the four numbers. That way if they...that way they didn't need, they didn't do a formal approval, but...
Right.
Then it's still...
And the reason was they haven't been...
So I'll notify them that if they don't win it, then we wouldn't hold it up.
Okay.
That was our...
So actually, the money is in the Cultural Arts Advisory Board Reserve Fund, so part of our motion needs to cover that we're removing the money.
The motion should be...
Okay. There you go. Let me see that. That I don't have.
Here's Page Two.
Okay, here we go.
Oh, here it is.
So...
Yeah.
Yeah, let me see this here. It must have been something...
Your suggested motion.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Make a motion that I move to repurpose the use of up to $2,000 in the Downtown Cultural Arts Advisory Board Statue Reserve Fund for downtown historic landmark signs contingent on the following. One, that the Downtown Cultural Art Board will be notified of this request and if they are in objection, they will need to provide such objection in writing within 30 days. And two, the understanding that funds will be replenished by a private party if needed for future installation, plaques, lighting, maintenance, or grant matches for downtown statues.
I second the motion. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is City Board Minutes. We have attached to the packet the Recreation Commission Minutes. Any questions or comments concerning the Board Minutes?
I have none.
Not? Next item then is Commission Comments. Lewis, do you have any comments?
Yes. Yes, I do have some comments. I had handed out some just general information about something that EMS face nationwide, certain problems that they have. And I had a chance to discuss it with Craig and we had a good conversation. And I think one of the things that came out of that, we had looked at the possibility of setting up an exit interview that we could use to...that would judge, give the chance to look at overall, all the city departments have a better understanding of why, you know, why we're not able to retain people, why we have such a high attrition rate. It would be something that the employee would fill out and sign off on, and it would be something that would be...I would like to see it in conjunction with the HR department. You know, all organizations where I've worked at, we've had situations that have come up. You know, sometimes, I had a couple situations. One, the conflict was, it happened to be my direct supervisor. In another instance, it was the actual manager of the whole facility. And it was resolved, but in 37 and a half years, I felt pretty lucky that those are the only two instances that I had. But the problem that we had as a work group where I worked at was getting people to...or getting the supervisory people ahead of that or above the people that we were having conflict with to actually understand what it was, the problems we were facing. And it didn't come to be until things were...had really gotten out of hand before they took an interest in it. So I think this exit interview would be a good process to start. I would like to think that the employees, that they would feel comfortable enough that...I know the national line of...the line of progression, you go to your direct supervisor first and you try to resolve it, and then you move up the chain of command. I understand that. But it makes it difficult if the person you're having conflict with is the person you've got to go before and report to. So they really need to feel that they have somewhere they can go, where there's some confidentiality and where they feel safe. In this case, it might be the HR person. It might be directly to the city manager. Because it's very uncomfortable to work for someone that you have issues with. And if you feel like you can't legitimately express those concerns without the feeling that you might lose your job because you might be outspoken. But the whole situation is, the communication is the key. If you can figure out why these situations exist, well, let's fix these situations so we don't have turnover. Doesn't make any difference whether it's in the, you know, in the water department or the wastewater department or where it's at. It could happen anywhere. But employees are valuable. They need to feel like they can offer a critique, they have concerns that they should be able to address without feeling that they may suffer some type of retribution. I don't know whether that's the case. That's all I'm saying. I've seen it in the past. But they have to feel that they have an option. And I think if we really want to get down to the heart of the matter of why we have attrition, high attrition rates in certain departments in the city, I think we need to look at the other side of the coin, and that is directly open a channel for current employees. If you wanted to go back to the last handful of employees that left, sit down and have an honest conversation as to why. This little study I handed out here a couple of sessions ago, and it stated that 70% of employers believe that when an employee leaves, it's because of pay. But the study also says 88% of the employees say they're leaving for other reasons other than pay. So in certain departments, it's too critical to have a high rate of turnover. You know, if your people are working longer hours, they don't have enough time off, you know, your expenses for overtime seem to go through the roof. You can't have a tired workforce. It just compounds and creates a lot more problems. So, you know, I hope we can look a little further into this.
Definitely. Let me just say a couple of things. First, we as administration concur that exit interviews are an important administrative function that every organization should undertake. And we have done it in a formal way and in, I would say, as we've talked, not the best way to do it. And we're setting up a new process for that, for all...any employee that leaves will do an exit interview through the HR person, not their department head or anything out like that. I mean, that's...we've talked about that's key and that's the way it's usually done is you have that. And so the organization can collect great information about...from employees that are leaving, they're already leaving. So you're finding, you're getting, you're asking them similar questions for no matter what department they're leaving from. But again, we support that as an organization, it's something we should be doing and will be doing in the future. Now, in regards to EMS turnover specifically, that's a nationwide problem. And we've talked about that in my last community, we had the same problem. It wasn't always pay, but oftentimes it was. We'd lose paramedics to air med services because they double their salary and... We'd lose paramedics to air med services because they double their salary and that type of thing, or lots of reasons. Or, don't want to get into much of the detail, obviously, because there's lots of reasons, but paramedics that are premium. And it's tough to find, where, you know, to find people, put them through training, they get trained here, and then they move on. Right now, one of the issues we're facing is with Kansas change in law, that a paramedic, that's like a one-year review course, and they can go right in to be a registered nurse, and immediately jump into a different situation more, so we're facing the loss there. But it's, it's, so what I'm saying is, there's lots of reasons, especially in that field. That's the same in the police across the country, police and paramedics. And, and of course, the added issue we had here of combining your firefighter and your EMS. But that's, my last community, that's the way it is, it's the way it's going to be. And so some people don't want to be both paramedic and a firefighter, you know? So, so there's lots of reasons. But, but we believe in certainly in exit interviews, and like I say, we'll talk about the process, and we've already started looking into that, about exactly kind of the key questions you ask. Because you can get a good information about the organization, or perception of employees that are leaving. Because then they do feel that they can be more, maybe more upfront about the situation as they saw it.
Yeah, I, that, thank you, thank you. I'm glad you addressed some of those points. The key thing is that they feel like, like they can express their concerns openly and respectfully. You know, we're, we're all adults here, and that they'll get a fair shake, and they won't fear that, that they'll, that they may, you know, lose their job down the road because they did speak out. So it's, it's got to be done with confidentiality, where they feel safe that they can make the, express their concerns. And that's what we're, we're trying to drive at. Whatever department you're in, you just can't, you can't have so much turnover, and it just affects the, that particular organization, and it has detrimental effects all the way down. And especially that particular department. It's, it's the lifeline to your, to your health here, healthcare here in the communities. So, and yeah, they are at a premium, they can go a lot of places. We seem to get people to, to come here, and of course, they know what their, their starting wage is to come here, but we can't seem to hold people. You know, when I looked at the longevity, the amount of tenure, if you take the captains out, you're looking at a workforce that turns over, has less than, less than two-year service. So if you look at probably the last five years, I don't have any idea. Let's say, the information you gave me, let's, let's break it down. Let's say you have seven or eight people a year leave. So if you look at eight, you're looking at someone exiting approximately every six, six weeks, five days. So it's that constant turnover that you have. So maybe once in a while, we can sit down and, and actually see what the, what all the driving forces are into why we're, we're able to attract people. We just can't get them to stay any length of time here. And maybe move in the direction, start solving these problems, and having a more stable organization.
And I would agree, obviously, it's a problem we're addressing, have been addressing. I mean, Dave is here, Sean is here, they can speak in more detail. But again, this isn't anything unique, and we had to address it in my last two cities. It's been a problem for some time. So we're not unique here, other than the most recent thing, one of the issues we had is, we did combine departments, EMS and fire at one point, and, and that created some of that tension. Well, I was a firefighter, I don't want to be a paramedic. Or I'm a paramedic, I don't want to be a firefighter. So there was some turnover in that regard, but we're past that, I think, for the most part. But the issue still is, paramedics can write their own ticket pretty much now. And, and again, Dave can speak more to it, but, and they do. And we, we've done signing bonuses, we've done, of course, paramedic training, and put them on a contract, so they have to stay two years and so forth. And, and we know, we've seen sometimes, that two years is up, well, all right, I've fulfilled my agreement, now I'm looking elsewhere. We just lost a couple of paramedics to Tulsa, a larger department, they wanted, you know, in talking with, again, informal exit interview, why are you leaving? Well, one of them was a personal relationship, but the other one was, we want to be in a bigger city, bigger operation, and more money. I think it more money as well. So that's not always the driving factor, but it is in a lot, in a lot of times. So sometimes, as a small department, we're a training ground. And my last community is that way. And so I'm not saying we're obviously perfect, but I, I laud both Dave and Sean for really taking steps the best we can. We're signing to help fill our gaps, part-time paramedics. Other departments, you know, would, they may work full-time in another department, but we hire them here to come, and they'll work basically kind of a second job, part-time for us to help fill in when we have gaps like that. So Sean has done a great job in really getting out and finding those people. So it is, it is a challenge, there's no question about it. And I think they're doing, you know, as we've talked about it, they're, they're doing everything we can to address that. Again, more, putting more training, people on contract, but getting them to stay here. Maybe Dave can remind me, the average life of a paramedic's kind of like, you know, even no matter where they are, you know, four to six years, maybe something like that.
It was four and a half.
Four and a half, was that?
Yeah, the memo that you sent out earlier.
So, so that's the challenge, you know? You just don't find twenty-year paramedics that, in one place anyway, typically. So as we address these issues, hopefully, we'll get a more, you know, reduce that turnover. Because you're right, turnover is costly. We have it in the police department, we have turnover there as well. We're trying to address that. My last community, again, the same thing, police, we had to, we restructured the police some, a position specifically to try to keep officers there, because we were a training ground again. They'd, they'd come, we'd put them through the academy, a couple of years, and then they're off to the big city, you know? Kind of a thing. So it is a challenge. And I appreciate you asking the questions and, and talking about it, because we certainly are confronting it as best we can. And I think that Dave and Sean are doing a great job, and we'll continue to look at all avenues that we can to, to help reduce that turnover.
Well, I, I appreciate our, on our one-on-one conversation that we had. We got to talk about a lot of things, and that was the direction you indicated you were, were headed to. And the job is stressful enough, so why put more stress and burden on the employees that we have when it's not necessary? So.
I mean, that's part of it, is stress, and that's why there's sometimes a burnout, you know? They just, because like you, I think, as Mayor said, in recognizing the EMS, the paramedics, it takes a special person to do that. And like you said, I don't know how you do that. I don't, I don't, I couldn't do that, at least for very long. It is a stressful thing. So anybody that can do that, it's a special type of person to do that. But that's part of the problem as well, they just burn out. They just, I don't want to do this anymore. Or that's why they go into RN. It's not that emergency type of response, or just in a hospital situation, or, or a clinic situation. But, but we're, we're working hard at that, trying to, because we don't like turnover, and same in the police department, we're trying to reduce that turnover. And just finding, again, recruits, same with the police department, finding competent, qualified recruits, and getting them on board, and keep, and then keeping them. That's, that's our goal.
I just have one question on a statement you made. The, the other EMS personnel that are coming in, are, are they just performing EMS duties? If they're coming in from other areas, or they're, they're coming in as EMS firefighter one?
Yeah, they, they, they have to respond to any call. I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dave or Sean, but that they're there to, just like any other, they're filling that role. So if there's a fire, they're there.
Okay, because I didn't know whether every, if all departments have fire EMS trained, or, or we were just getting EMS personnel, and that's all they were responding to EMS duties and not firefighter duties?
I don't know, too many departments aren't both fire and EMS, but Dave can speak to that, you know?
Okay, well, that may
Let Dave answer that question.
Okay.
Some of them are firefighters, and some of them, like Stacy, she's, her husband is a fire captain in Coffeyville.
Okay.
She does paramedic, but what those people do on the scene, they help us set the hydrants, they get the Scott air packs changed out, they help pull hoes, and they're not necessarily in the fire, but they're actively involved in it.
Okay. Okay, that was my question, because I didn't know how that worked out. I, I didn't want to assume that every department was a combined fire EMS, but
Sure.
But it, it prompted a question for me, so, gentlemen, thank you.
All right. Thanks.
That's all I have.
Seems like if the paramedics are driving force, that the firefighters are coming up short. If the turnovers, seems like you need to start balancing out firefighter only and paramedic, so you have some specialty to cut that change over down. At one time, you know, the firefighters were twenty, twenty-five years to retirement, but if, you know, it doesn't seem like it's working when you have that many coming and going, that you, you come up short with the firefighting protection, that men are, are at risk without proper backup with experience. But, no other questions?
No, thank you.
Maybe, you know, if this doesn't change, maybe you need to look at a different approach for the department. I had a question on the bid date for the Peter Pan extension. Has Transsystems been able to establish a bid date for it yet on?
Do you remember what Sean said in the email? I can, I can't remember, because we asked about when the road could open, and when the bidding possibly would be, but I can't remember. We could get back to you.
I thought you said it was going to bid out in spring, summer, and, and be, and be conducted in the fall, and they thought it was a ninety-day project.
A lot of it depended on the state approval.
Yeah, but they had to get all the approvals.
Has to go through state review, approval, and so forth. I can get you back, I can get you information back on that.
Because if, if it could bid while the contractor's still on site, it'd give him a, an advantage, a legal advantage.
Yeah.
Because he doesn't have to remobilize.
Exactly. That was
The corridor access management agreement in June, Wayne Goodmanson from KDOT came and presented, and at the meeting, there was some discussion, they were going to come back with some clarification statements, and has that taken place? Are we still waiting on KDOT? Or where are we?
Yes, and yes. We met with, I guess it was in, with Wayne, back in August, was it August of last year? And talked about that, and then we would be, so we would be waiting for further language. I mean, we'd already been talking about, Jeff and Nelda Buckley had been talking about getting the language worked out. And at that August meeting, Wayne said, well, he, he wanted to go back and contact some of those businesses that were concerned about how the access management plan was. And just, was it last week? Jeff sent out, Jeff sent out a letter to Nelda and Wayne, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but they responded back, I don't know if it was directly to your letter, but anyway, like, the next day, we were told that we were to be expected language from the state forthwith. I don't, I haven't seen anything yet, but, so, should be getting that ASAP, some language back.
But in the, in the study, it showed alleys as being used as accessways to businesses. And by doing that, it places the alley reconstruction available for funding to the corridor access management plan. And we've got alleys well behind Mikey's, well, from there, clear on down to Casey's, that are all in really bad condition. And it'd be great funding to get those replaced, but we're going to have to sign that agreement. And the alleys just, you know, you go behind Independence Family Medicine, and particularly Mikey's, they're really in need of some attention. And last year, they were having trouble getting, awarding funds from that. They had money, they were actually going out soliciting projects. So it'd be a great opportunity for us to get it and, and get our alleys addressed at their cost. So, so you can check with them and get back with us on it.
Mayor, I found that update, this from three days ago. Sean told me the negotiated portion is on schedule to be open mid-March. The schedule is on, the bidding and construction depends upon KDOT's review period. I expect it to be bid this summer, which construction being completed in late fall. I estimate that Peter Pan will be closed for around ninety days, and he sent that to me three days ago.
Okay.
They're also waiting for the, the grant agreement from KDOT on that negotiated, the other part, and we haven't received that, so.
Grant agreement?
Yeah. So we're kind of waiting on that as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Over the only items I had. With that, we'll move to public concerns. We have a request to address the commission from Dean Hayes. Dean, would you like to? And the concern is City Hall?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Dean Hayes, 2625, ruling Green Drive. First, thank you for your service to the city and the citizens of Independence. Today, the economy is good, companies are expanding, families are mobile and on the move. Independence is a family-friendly community. We've really enjoyed raising our children here. I love living here in Independence. But our population is declining, and has been since the 1920s. Property taxes have increased, deferred maintenance being an important reason. Water rates have increased, and additional increases are planned, deferred maintenance, again, being a part of the issue. Infrastructure and infrastructure maintenance cost money, and additional infrastructure inherently means additional infrastructure maintenance costs. As we look to the future, taxpayers expect you to aggressively pursue cost, to aggressively pursue cost savings, and otherwise be diligent in the, in every expenditure of tax dollars. But reducing services will not reverse the decline in population. So we also need a focus on a strategy that will attract jobs and families to Independence. That brings me to the $16 million City Hall proposal, which is before you now. I served on the City Hall task force and believe a strong consensus was reached for this proposal. The task force is a great example of concerned citizens responding to the needs of the city. However, the task force was not charged with funding the proposal, nor were they asked to rank the proposal against other needs of the city. This, the needs of the city are great, and $16 million is too much to spend on a new City Hall building right now. Here's why. Building D costs roughly $400,000 per year to maintain. However, the interest on a $16 million debt is about $400,000 per year by itself, before considering offsetting maintenance costs of the new building. The city recognizes no savings over Building D by moving ahead with the proposal. The $16 million proposal doesn't fix the cost problem. We need a lower-cost solution. Secondly, over the last eighty years, Independence has had a steady decline in population. When the 1916 City Hall was built, Independence was growing rapidly. Growth helps pay for infrastructure investments. Infrastructure investment in a time of population decline means that each year, the remaining citizens have to pay a larger share of the cost burden. Increasing infrastructure and decreasing population is a bad plan. We need a lower-cost solution. Finally, once the money is spent on a new building, it cannot be spent on other needs like deferred maintenance. The deferred maintenance of existing streets and roads and other infrastructure. So we need a lower-cost solution. The City Hall of the future needs to be digitally connected, agile, responsive, and scalable. The City Hall of the future needs to, to align with the strategic plan, a strategic plan that addresses the realities of our community, that, that our community is facing, like population decline. So the next dollar invested in additional infrastructure needs to align with the vision for growth of Independence, needs to support a strategy that encourages private investment by business and families, and needs to encourage innovation and collaboration across the whole community. That would be a good plan. Thank you for your time. Please consider this input for your, in your decision process. I have copies of that statement if you'd like.
Thank you. I would. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also have a request to address the commission from Ned Stickman concerning 725 North Penn. Ned?
My name is Ned Stickman, and the commissioners have been working with the property at 725 North Penn for an extended period of time, and I wanted to bring up a, a case, about ten or fifteen years ago, there was a fire on Eighth Street, less than a block away from that structure, and the folks that owned the building, the house, were in the midst of a divorce, they, neither one cared about the other, neither one wanted the other one to have anything, and so it sat there, and as our policy was then, as it is now, you have a fire, you condemn the, the property. I'd made a comment at the staff meeting, I was a city employee at the time, that that was, that house was too nice to just tear down, and April, April's not here tonight, but April was able to work her magic through the, the Housing Authority, and, and they came up with some funding to repair that house, and ended up getting it into the hands of, I'm assuming she bought it to a single mom, and was very happy to have a place to live. And I went to the, this, the county's website, and that house is still there, it's still a nice house, and the county has it appraised for over sixty thousand dollars, so it's been spinning off a thousand bucks a year in, in property tax revenues for this city, county, school district, college. And I think that, that there's a possibility that the 725 North Penn could fit into that. It's a lot more seriously damaged, I'm not nearly as prepared as Dean is, but I wanted to go ahead and speak this evening, because I didn't want to wait another two weeks on this. But I would like to see a cooperative effort between the Housing Authority, and I mentioned it to Jerry Bright with the Community Mission for Improved Housing, and I thought they perhaps might be able to get involved, if nothing else, to do some legwork, to contact neighbors. I've not talked to the neighbors, I've not talked to the owner, I don't know what the owner, owner's plan is to do with that property, and neighbors may want that property to build a garage or a playground or something there, I don't know. But I do think that it's a, a nice enough structure to, to warrant a little more investigation to see what might happen there. I do know that, I mean, we can do nothing, and hope somebody does something, or we can tear it down, which probably will cost us about seven thousand dollars, and then we'll probably be mowing a lot for three hundred dollars a year forever and ever, maybe not ever and ever, but anyway, long time. So I think when you compare that to the other options, I'd rather see the seven thousand dollars invested into the property to make it better, so we can generate some property, generate and not have an open hole on a highway for people to drive by and look at the backs of, of houses that are over on the next street. So, anyway, I thank you for your time, and I'd like to see some, some more investigation done into this, to see if this couldn't be a structure that might be saved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ned. With, that was our last citizen that wished to address the commission, so we are now ready for adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
And I'll second the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Thank you for attending.